Good evening, everyone. We'll call the meeting to order. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Hamilton?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Revulinski?
Yes.
Boyer?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Hammuss?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Thank you. Are there any changes or additions to this evening's agenda? Not, we'll move to our consent agenda. We have approval of minutes from the February 25 council meeting. We have approval of liquor licenses for Revelations Cafe, The Hideaway, and Top of the Rock, or Red Rock. Also, we have a resolution of employment in parks and recreation. And then we also have claims in the amount of $246,100.46. The park and recreation personnel request is for a gymnastics and trampoline coach at $30,000 a year, Jeff Ide. Call council's attention to that because it is a full-time position. Are there any questions regarding any of those consent agenda items?
Mayor, I don't have a question. I'd just like to comment regarding that employment. Because when I first saw that, I was a little bit shocked. However, I had a nice discussion with Derek, and I wanted to point out that this situation is a break-even, or maybe even a profit center for the park and rec. So it seems like it is a good move on the part of Derek and the department overall.
Yeah, I think we looked at that earlier in the week also, and looked at the revenues that were coming in from the program and what were projected, and it definitely seemed like it would support and go beyond supporting the position, so.
Yeah, actually, I just have a question on this.
Sure.
If I could ask Derek. I remember when I was young, trampolining was very popular, and then the places all closed, and it was because of lawsuits. You know, have we looked at that at all? I mean, issues regarding liability?
There's safety precautions now with the trampoline. They actually make a device on there where they wear a belt, so they'll jump, okay, if you're not an experienced trampoliner. You can do jumps, and you're supported with this harness.
I see.
So, I mean, there's safety precautions going through these kinds of equipment. I don't know back in the day, but right now.
Yeah.
We were all freestyle back then.
That was our day, John.
Your honor, what is a trampoline actually?
But, you know, I guess I want to say that, you know, I think we should also, as long as the program is paying for itself, I'm supportive. If that changes, then I think it needs to be reevaluated.
Yeah, I think a good point. Okay, there's certainly a lot of popularity right now, and I think there's, you know, again, with the new gymnasium that is proposed, the new rec center, it is the kind of thing that can also bring meets and matches, gymnastic matches here to the city as well, and I know that's part of your vision, is building up more of gymnastics program in the city. So, we'll go ahead and give that a shot. Any other discussion? Entertain a motion then to approve our consent agenda?
Move to approve.
All second.
Moved by Hamilton, second by Rasmussen. Any other discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Boyer?
Yes.
Hammuss?
Yes.
Revulinski?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, council, we have a request from the Chamber of Commerce to allow for the use of the city parking lot for a citywide garage sale on May 18, 2013. Is there someone representing the chamber here? I know that they were at an open house. This is an annual event. I don't think we absolutely need a presentation by the chamber, but would entertain a motion to approve the use of the parking lot for the event.
Move to approve.
Moved by Revulinski, second by Hallie. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, the same sign. Okay, thank you. Next, we have a request by Mary LaFrances to address the council regarding Fairfield's water supply. Mary, come up to the podium, please.
I have kindly helped out with some copies because I had a war with my computer just before I left.
Hi, are you? Thank you.
I should take time to get here. I think it was enough.
Mary, if you've got an extra copy, could you give one to our water superintendent, Carl Chandler? Also got one, Carl? All good. Great.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'm Mary LaFrances. I'm a retired registered nurse and have been increasingly concerned by one death after another from cancer in our community. About five years ago, I took care of the wife of a friend of mine. I'm sure you probably know many of these people. And I was shocked, as a nurse, by what had happened to her body from breast cancer. About two-thirds of her chest wall was just destroyed. A few weeks ago, I attended the funeral of another friend who died of the same disease. Two friends of a friend of mine, as well as myself, about three years ago. Fortunately, mine was not malignant. Last year, a close friend of my husband passed away three months after being diagnosed. His sister is now in her last days from colon cancer. Also, the friend of a son of mine, whom many of you probably know, is in his last few weeks of liver cancer here in Fairfield. Research studies have long confirmed the link between hormones and breast and other cancers and other disorders and diseases. Biologists have known for many years of the hormone estrogen, estrogen overload, in the water systems of the world, water systems and oceans of the world. Some years ago, estrogen was declared by the World Health Organization as a Class 1 carcinogen. The breast cancer epidemic and that of the aggressive and advanced forms, such as triple-negative breast cancer, is occurring at younger and younger ages. There is also evidence of testicular cancer in young boys. I know personally of a 16-year-old son of a friend of mine who had that cancer. And fortunately, with surgery and treatment, he's in remission and has a good prognosis. I'm in the process of gathering results from more recent, and the most recent studies I can find by leading researchers in the field, particularly a Dr. Joel Brand, whose literature is being sent to me, and other organizations I'm in touch with. I had a discussion with the Dr. Karen Malick today, who's the founder of an international organization on breast cancer and research. Over the past few weeks, I've generously been given information and suggestions by our water and sewer departments. I have yet to meet the head of our sewer department and Councilman Hallie, who explained to me some of the details about the Blue Zone project, which I'm interested in. Also, Carrie Bell, who is a member of the Sierra Club, so I'm looking to get involved with them and find out more about their activities and interests. So with these concerns, I'm very much interested in undertaking the testing of Fairfield's waters for hormones and/or other possible carcinogens. Mr. Carl has graciously called the state lab, was it Carl? And, excuse me, they suggested an EPA test 588, which is for five hormones and two steroids. But these or other tests that, excuse me, might be appropriate to identify toxic elements in our water supply with the incidence of breast cancer occurring in our community, that I think the first thing to do is to start with facts as well as theory and see what is actually occurring. The story is wider, but for the sake of time, I'll stay with these points for beginners. The test that Carl was suggested was told about cost between $400 and $500, and I would urge the city to find these funds. I understand there were funds from the Atrozine settlements, but I'm sure that there should be some source for a one-time to see what actually is happening in our water system. And I invite others, I have a clipboard with a sign-up sheet, if any of you, anyone might be interested in the matter, to leave their name and address, and we, together, maybe we can research further and come up with any other suggestions.
Great, thank you, Mary.
Thank you very much.
Carl, now, I guess I would start with the question, what are the sources of hormones in water? What would be the potential sources? And we, and I know you probably haven't done enough research yet, I don't want to put you on the spot.
You can't ask that 100 percent. I mean, a lot of that stuff's going to be man-made type of things.
Right.
Get it out of the ground, well water. I don't really foresee those, but not that I can say that we can test it for.
Right.
But water that's being used to recycle, pills, use pharmaceuticals and things that are flushed down the toilets for sinks and stuff, or, excuse me, disposed of improperly possibly.
Okay.
That may get into the waters like that. I don't have a fear of that, but you are.
Because of the depth.
Impervious layers of rock could go through.
Right.
And whatever, to get into a water source, but, you know, lots down there, many years ago.
Okay. Do you feel that doing this test to determine whether we would have anything in our supply at this point in time would be prudent?
Well, as I say, it's nothing that we're required to do under our guidelines for DNR. If the council so directs me, then I would do as directed.
Okay, thanks, Carl.
I have one other question, if I may.
Sure.
Did the state lab say anything about, is this something that they routinely get questions for, for doing this test, 588? And then if something is found, do we know or have a process for removing this or cleaning it up from our water supply, if it is there?
That would take some additional research as well.
Okay.
And as far as anything like that out of the water source, I would have to do a little more research on that, to be honest with you.
So it's not something that's.
As far as regulations, like if found, has to be fixed. I didn't ask that question. It didn't sound like it was one that was highly used. I mean, she had to look up and get a number for it to find out what was going to cost. It wasn't, it took her time to have to work that.
We might also, we might also just check Carl to see if, with our filter manufacturers, to see if something like that is taken care of through our system, that there's a possibility there also. But I guess it probably wouldn't hurt to do a little research in that direction.
Your honor, I do not believe we are currently equipped to remove those, the answer to that I believe would probably be that we are not currently equipped to do so, and that some improvement to filtration would be necessary for that to happen. I would also encourage our community, really. I was talking to our county health department recently. We are a community that has a radon challenge. A lot of our buildings are, you know, exposed to radon far, far in excess of what would be recommended exposure to that. So, and it is linked strongly to breast cancer and other cancers that you see at quite a common rate in our area. So that is, he and I were discussing doing so in our public buildings, and it's not a cheap thing to do. It's about $50 per room, 50 to 100 bucks per room of the occupancy that you're looking at, to see how the radon is in that room or in that building. I think it's something we should look at doing in our public buildings, obviously, going forward over the next year or so, though. We're looking into the cost of that and which buildings have occupancy, or rooms that would, you know, how would it break down in the rooms as far as the square footage and how many testing devices we would need. But I would encourage folks to do that at their homes, because radon, of course, is odorless, and you can't see it, you can't smell it. But it does a very strong effect on individuals, and we do have it emanating naturally from our soil for many different reasons. But don't want to go into too much geology, but I would strongly recommend it.
So, council, you have a request then to provide the test for this within our water supply. Is there an interest in giving Carl direction to undertake that test?
I'd like to suggest that, maybe Carl, you could research these a little more. It's a wide range of costs, between $400 and $500. Apparently, there's seven, it's five hormones and two steroids. And Mary, thank you for bringing this to our attention. I think, you know, that's important. Maybe, you know, you could research and, you know, perhaps we could do the lesser expensive ones and just see if there's any trace of any of these things in there. And if that was the case, then we could go ahead and spend the money on the more, the greater ones. I think what Carl's saying, Mary, is that it's very unlikely with our water source that any of these chemicals are actually in it. But I think our city administrators point that, you know, radon is a carcinogen that's really prevalent in here, and, you know, so there's a lot of sources of cancer-causing things. But maybe, you know, because the alarm's been raised, maybe we could ask Carl to at least do the lesser expensive ones, and then based on any, you know, if we see anything in there, then we could go ahead with more. That would be my suggestion.
That's the only one that she knew of at this time.
Okay, the 588.
As far as the less expensive ones, that's the only one she would worry about.
Yeah.
This test here.
Okay. So, John, would you make that a motion then?
Yeah, I'd make that a motion.
So, a motion to research the most cost-effective testing for hormones in water supply?
I'll second.
Second by Hallie, in the other discussion. Not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, the same sign? Okay, motion passes unanimously, so we'll watch that and work on that. I think the point that John raised is an important one, too. We also don't want to create any fear based on, based on that, because certainly, you know, we unfortunately do live in a, you know, very toxic society in so many different ways that can lead to cancer, and we don't want to pin it on the water at this point in time. We obviously take great pride in the, in what we do in filtering our water, so we'll see if there's anything further that we need to do. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Let me just, I'll be fine just research out, is it okay if I go through Kevin with this?
Sure. Yes, yeah, make, I would say, make the decision with.
Before we go into the next council meeting?
Yeah.
If that's okay?
Yes, thanks, Carl. That's great.
Thank you.
Okay. Council, we'll move to our resolutions and action items on ordinances. The first, a resolution to set a public hearing, which would be at our next council meeting, March 25th, for the creation of a TIF district. And I know that Kevin spoke with you generally about the program. I think we spoke to the whole council about that, or if not, you want to give a little bit of a background, but this would be a hearing to determine the cause for the TIF district.
Yes, thank you, your honor. I sent an email out with some generalities. I do understand that probably Tracy has contacted most of you to speak about it in person. I'd like to invite him up to make a few comments about the district and where we're hoping to be heading with this project.
John and I got tagged in this.
That's right. There are some lawful concerns here, David.
I will talk about the non-lawfuls, not non-lawful. But, I won't talk about the legal stuff. Basically, as we're proposing a urban renewal area that would eventually include a TIF project within it, that includes the Community First Credit Union and some of the property around the Community First Credit Union. The Community First Credit Union is going to be building a new facility, and we would like to capture that increment to be able to put some improvements, specifically a street in between the credit union and Walmart, in that strip there, to be able to get back to the property that's behind there and open up that for future and potential projects, economic development, growth. So we're asking today to go ahead and set the public hearing. I think Connie has set an economic development committee meeting for Wednesday at 5:30, where I will then come and propose, give all the numbers on what the increment would create, what the street cost, you know, what the project cost would be as far as the city infrastructure, so we can discuss that and lay that out all for the committee on Wednesday evening.
6:30 on Wednesday.
Oh, 6:30.
This Wednesday? 6:30 on Wednesday.
Okay, thank you for correcting me. So this is just the start, this is just the start of the process, and I think John will probably speak to the process as far as the hearing.
Yeah, a couple of things. When you have your meeting, there is one part of what you have in your hand that you'll decide how far you want to go as far as agreeing to an increment expenditure. That's on the, I believe, the middle of the fifth page of what you have in your hand. This is a draft of a plan. This will be noticed and published, and you'll have an opportunity for the public to pick up a copy of this and look at it before you have your public hearing. It's conceivable that you may have some questions at your 18th meeting, and you may decide to do it later than the date we're talking about, but that would be the earliest we could move on it. In that time also, you're going to want to have a consult with your other taxing bodies in the county, so your school district, your hospital, and your county board, get in on this also. And our expectation is probably no longer opposed to the idea of economic development and incremental increase in valuation of this type of project using causes. We've had 10 TIFs in the past in our community in the last couple decades that have been successful and resulted in the kind of development that you like to see happen, type of increase in tax base you like to have happen. So there are some details in here that I think are fairly accurate, and there may be some more things we have to add to this as far as some additional code sections and so forth. But this is initially the plan that you'll be asked to talk with Kevin or Tracy in your meeting on the 18th.
Okay, thank you, John. Okay, so I think at this point in time, more information will come out on this project at the economic development meeting, and then we'll have a report on that at our next meeting on the 25th. So at this time, I'd entertain a motion to set the public hearing for March 25th.
Sound move.
Moved by Boyer, second by Hamilton. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, the same sign? Thank you. Now, council, next is a resolution to approve our participation in the Blue Zones project for community policy. There are six different areas that the whole community will be working in. And in the area of community policy, we had a meeting last week and went over the three different areas that fall under the category of community policy that the city would be working on. One of them is the National Complete Streets Program, which is basically a zoning and design program to plan for pedestrian and bicycle use of streets. And there are a number of ways to approach this, either by restriping and redesignating streets that we have now, but also putting it into our code to make it a part of new streets and new developments. So that is one of the areas. The second is in the area of tobacco policy. And with the state laws, there are other things locally that we can do to encourage less or discourage tobacco use and encourage less tobacco use. And we will be looking at those areas as well. And then a general category of healthy eating and active living. This is, falls into the category of what is available on in-city buildings, city, city property, more nutritional items as opposed to more junk food items. There are areas in there for more drinking fountains within public parks, some of those areas. So what we try to do within these areas is to qualify for a number of points that are given for accomplishing each of these. We feel that we can pretty easily meet the point requirement, and that would help us towards our overall certification within the city as a Blue Zone. So it starts by just this general resolution saying that this is an area that we will work on as a city from a policy level. And I know we had four council members that were able to attend the meeting last week, and I think you'll understand it was just those items that we had discussed. If there are any other questions that any of the other council members have about the resolution? Okay? Not, entertain a motion to approve the resolution?
Move to approve.
Moved by Hallie.
Second.
Second by Revulinski. Any discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Hallie?
Yes.
Revulinski?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Boyer?
Yes.
Hammuss?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Next, council, we'll move on to our public hearing on our annual budget for 2013, 2014. And we'll start by opening up the public hearing, and the budget has been published. We, John, I'll have, between you and Kevin, hit some of the highlights of the budget itself, but we'll open up for any comment at this time in our public hearing. If not, we'll close the public hearing. And before we move on to our resolution, John, if you could give us a kind of a synopsis, and Kevin also.
I want to congratulate Kevin and Joy for putting this together this year. We've, I've been through this process personally many, many times when it was in quite a different situation. Our city faces challenges economically, but on one hand, you know, with our, the challenges, I mean, have to do with some accounting practices from the past that we're, that we're rectifying. But in general, the thing that I, you know, I carefully considered whether or not I would actually support this budget, because it does ask for a slight increase in tax rate to our population. And the budget actually is, to me, it's adequate. We've been through this process so many times where we feel squeezed, where we have to, you know, just bare minimum, you know, and less in so many, in so many ways. There's a little more breathing room that we allow in this budget, and I think people have read about it, you know, certainly we've offered the raises to the department heads. We've, we've done things that have really, will really make a difference in many different departments. For instance, we've gone to overtime system for our police department instead of the present comp time, which has not worked out at all. We've allowed for adequate compensation for a computer professional at the library, which is an ongoing issue with them. So this, this budget adequately addresses many of the needs of the department and really brings us to a higher professional level, I feel. And so I think the community can feel a higher sense of, a greater, enjoy more public, adequate public service from our, from our city employees and better functioning from our departments. As far as specifics, I'll let Kevin introduce it. I think people have had the chance to review any kind of high points that are then published in the paper, but Kevin, do you want?
I did bring some notes about the budget with me. I want to go. The budget, the budget, it's a, you know, everybody wants to always say it's a transitional budget, it's a, you know, it's a dynamic budget and all these things. It is a lot of that, but I think truly this year, it is a transitional budget in the sense that we're taking on a lot of new things that we're looking at getting into doing. We're also, in all the, many of the departments, we're buying a lot of needed equipment that had been hung out there for a while, you know, machines, smaller and larger pieces of equipment. I think infrastructure, our personnel infrastructure here is bolstered in a way that we probably needed to, that's a challenge we needed to take on for a while. I think we do that appropriately in here, but not over, not over the top with it. I think we do that appropriately in here, but not over the top with it, keeping it sustainable for us on a budgetary level. I can't think enough, our department heads, all, most of whom are here, I think maybe missing one, just a lot of help. And, you know, these guys run, these guys run our show. Our department heads do it. They gave us the budgets that they wanted and needed. I think there's a lot that they went without in their budgets of their own accord, knowing that it wasn't something, we can't do everything in one year. So I'd like to, you know, thank them, and I appreciate their help in doing this. And I think Joy, most of all, probably did more than anybody in putting, as usual is the case, the clerk does a lot of entry and a lot of analysis when they're putting this budget together. And just, I really, really do appreciate the help that Joy gave me in doing this. As a new guy, you're coming in, it's really tough. She's trying to tell you how it really works, and you want to say how you want it to work. So we worked together well, we had a good time, and all the department heads, same there, worked together very well doing this budget, and we're proud of it. There is a slight budget or a slight tax increase in it. Certainly, we appreciate our citizens helping us, help them make our community as good as it can be. So I guess that's.
Thanks, Kevin. So the summary is that you would be approving a $15.97 levy rate for our city portion of the taxes?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions regarding the budget?
I have a comment. I have had citizen calls regarding five department head raises, because they are significant. And as much as, you know, we all want to give raises, because it's a nice thing to do, I guess I would like to see that. Let me step back. And we know that within the police department, we do have officers that, again, are paid lower, and it's been a problem for the department, people leaving for other areas where they're paid more. And that may always be the case, we don't know that for sure. However, I guess I would, I don't know if this is, I guess it's a motion, I would rather see that $25,000, particularly in this year when we've had, we do have a lot of things that we are trying to fix, if you will. So for these large raises, for me, are a challenge, and obviously they've been a challenge for some citizens, because I've had some calls. So I guess my motion would be to pull those back and give each one of the department heads their $1,000 per person, plus their cost of living, and then $1,000 to officers and dispatch and the police department. Or apportion that $25,000 equally. I guess maybe that's what I should say versus just $1,000.
The rest of the 25, after you give $1,000 each to the department heads?
Well, I guess I'm saying, the 20, take that $25,000 and, you know, my thought was originally just do it $1,000, and then I.
And the rest split up among everybody?
Well, I, my thought was, okay, then you have a little bit extra, because I didn't think there were 25 people. I mean, there's less than that, but if you want to apportion it equally, that's fine. There's 20 in the, there's 14 officers and six dispatchers.
It would actually be $1,000, because the five other.
Okay, so that's what I'm saying, is $25,000. I would make that motion.
All right, so you're making a motion to approve the budget as amended?
As amended.
Okay. And does that need more definition as far as how that $25,000 is divided up now so that everyone else understands how that's divided within the budget?
Basically, the suggested motion would be, Your Honor, that $5,000 be split amongst five department heads, $1,000 apiece, and then the remainder, $20,000, would go $1,000 to each member of the police department, including dispatch, which apparently is 20 members.
Correct. The rest all goes to the police department.
There would be $20,000 left over after giving $1,000 to each department head. So each department head would get, that were scheduled to get the raise in this budget would get $1,000 apiece, and then a $1,000 raise would go to each member of the police department as well in this amendment. I guess you'd vote on the amendment.
Okay. I would just ask the chief of police, would that be the most equitable way to make that division of money? Would you do it differently by rank? Would it, do you feel it would?
I think I'd do it differently by rank. You know.
Seniority, maybe?
Exactly, because I think that, you know, the officers themselves got the overtime pay. So now what you're lacking is dispatch staff and the administration staff, for lack of better terms.
Your Honor, I would also say that basically the idea in this budget was to begin a long-term, long-term process throughout our entire organization. And I began that process with the leadership of that organization to the ability that I could in one year, I felt like, and sustain, again, in a sustainable manner, you can't solve all the problems in one year. But next year, we were going to continue in the process. I think there's a couple of leadership positions that were not in our process this year, because they weren't. And so, you know, that, not only picking up those couple of leadership positions that were not, but also eking into the departments with those effects in that budget, next year's budget, I mean. So that we're working step by step, as we can, toward the overall goal, which was, of course, to make us a comparable government along with others that we see out there in our same situation.
Can we approve the budget and not approve that portion to say there will be some work on that portion of the budget yet?
You'd have to approve your amendment and then approve the budget as amended.
Yeah.
Can I make a comment on, or is there a second?
Well, yeah, I would just ask if there's a second on the motion. Okay. So they're seeing no second, the motion will die. And is the, open to discussion on any other amendment, but would like to do that under an approved motion for the budget. Is there approval for the budget as?
I move for approval on the budget as presented.
Okay. Move by Revelinsky. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Hamilton. Okay. Any other discussion? Kevin, do you have any suggestion to modifying what Connie is presenting?
I don't, I think it's a well-deserved point, though, to be made, and that is that we know we have, you know, some departments that are in a very big pickle here. I mean, we are deciding to, I think, turn it around just in time. And, you know, I think we all know that, and I think it's not a bad suggestion for amendment at all, it's just looking at the same problem through a different lens. So I really don't have anything to add other than.
And I think the issue with our, you know, with our police force is that, you know, this year going through the process, we've become acutely aware of, you know, where we are and how we compare. And that the first step this year, as John had mentioned, was the overtime provision.
Which was huge.
And, yeah, and I think that what Kevin is saying, that is, that's something on an ongoing basis, you know, we will, you know, we will try to work on in terms of, you know, building that area of compensation. So I think that's the understanding, and Connie had, I think that's why the budget was put together this way. And again, I think with the chief's understanding also that this is a first step.
Right.
Okay. All right, any other discussion?
I just want to say, I like the spirit behind what you're remending, spreading it out. But I also know what Kevin's saying is, we're starting with leadership, and this will affect all the employees eventually. And from my understanding, we had a comparison of all the departments, and all the departments that were getting raises are also somewhat underpaid compared to other cities in Iowa our size. So I feel for your chief, but I feel for everyone, I feel for all the departments equally. So we'll start with this, and hopefully we'll remedy the other stuff moving forward.
Yeah, and as, you know, we raise this point every year through our budget process, but our personnel costs in running the city government are our highest percentage of costs. So we are, you know, always struggling with how to balance that, and I think we do a good job with it, and obviously the performance of our departments is something that we really do appreciate, but our ability to continue to operate is based on keeping up with those personnel costs. So any other discussion? Not, please call the roll.
Revelinsky?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Boyer?
No.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Okay. The annual budget will pass six to one. Thank you. And thanks, everyone, for the work putting into this, always the Ways and Means Committee department heads for working with our city manager, and of course, Joy and Kevin, thank you all very much for what you've prepared. Next, council will move to a request for tax abatement at 408 West Broadway. Barb Bloom, we know very well. And Barb's request is for an abatement of $10,000 in estimated improvements for a new roof residential.
It's my understanding, and I had a discussion earlier about this with someone, that new roofs, new windows are seen as maintenance for homes, and the assessor doesn't necessarily increase the tax valuation of the home because of adding a new roof. So there really wouldn't be a negligible amount of money to abate here if the valuation of the home isn't increased by an incremental amount. So I don't see this as really a viable way of using what we've got here.
Yeah.
If this was an addition, or if the roof extended over a deck, or it changed in a way the home so that the taxing of it would be increased, there would be a monetary amount that we could actually see being made for future tax revenue coming to the city. And I don't see that with a general maintenance type item.
Okay. Any other comments?
Well, there is a general improvement section on our form. That's what she checked. So I say, if we, well, if we approve it, though, the assessor makes the call whether or not to increase the value.
But I think when the assessor was approached by all this, she did make the specific statements that roofs and windows aren't really anything other than general maintenance rather than improved.
I agree with Darren. I mean, if she was going from, you know, an asphalt roof to a tile roof or something like that, that would be, you know, some appropriate, you know, there'd be a greater taxation on that, you know, greater valuation on the house. But I think if we set a precedent of new roofs, and then everybody, every time you put on a roof, you come in and fill one of these out, you hope you're going to get some abatement, I just don't see it. I don't see it.
I don't either.
Your Honor, if I may, I think that one thing to indicate too, though, and remember, why are we doing this, really? I mean, why would we do abatements, really? It's to keep homes from falling into a blighted situation. So I think if we discourage people from coming in and actually applying, no matter what that improvement is, God bless them, right, in these tough economic times. And also, the big thing is, the assessor will make the decision, and if it doesn't increase the property value by a certain percentage, as a matter of fact, it will not be applicable in the end. So I would just, I would just say.
I would ask a question, though, is that truly our intent? I mean, was that part of the discussion when we were going through this ordinance? Because I know when we'd had something like this in place in the past, it was really more as a tool to incentivize new development, new structural development, additions, new homes. So this would be a new, this would be a new spin, and I don't, I guess I would say that we would need to better define general improvements, renovation, remodel on our form so that people aren't confused that they can come in and apply for this. But I think the, I know when we had had residential abatement in the past, the intention was quite different than what you're describing. If that's changed, and that changed in the discussion when that came before committee, then that's another thing, but I think it was designed to be more of an incentive tool.
I think that is true. I think most people do look at it as more of an incentivizing tool, but, I mean, the hard, and the hard reality of it, though, is that a lot of our applications of it, because it is a basic, very fundamental tool toward incentivizing, that a lot of our applications to it, we're going to see are going to be just like this one, they're going to be for $10,000 to $40,000, because a lot of the times, anything newer, bigger, outside of a single-family home itself, I guess, or standalone commercial structure, there'll be a different kind of incentivizing likely discussion to go on. But just saying, I think that's a good point, though.
I would like to recommend that we have committee look this over in terms of definition, because I don't know that it's clear. I appreciate, you know, why Barb would bring this before us, you know, we do ask for general improvements, renovation, remodel, but I would ask the committee to look at this again and come back with a recommendation. And I believe we've worked that through our property committee. So Tony, if your committee would look at that.
And include the assessor once again?
Yes.
In that discussion.
And our city attorney as well, I think would be a good idea just to round out the wagon.
Barb, is that okay? We'll have the committee look at that and make a recommendation.
I don't know if it makes any difference, but it is a commercial property, and there are apartments upstairs.
Okay.
And I talked to Rebecca about it, and we didn't wish to mark.
Okay. Okay. So let's.
Were you putting in apartments, or?
I have two apartments upstairs, and I have downstairs.
Okay. So let's, yeah, we'll have the committee go ahead and review that and bring back recommendations. So entertain a motion to move this to committee.
So moved.
Moved by Revelinsky.
Second.
Second by Boyer. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign? Okay, thanks. Next, we have another request, residential for 502, or is it Kirkwood?
West.
Wes Kirkwood, I'm sorry.
Yes.
My.
Still opening up. Is someone familiar with this property and what kind of work that is going to be done? What kind of improvements?
Says entire house gutted plus addition.
Major renovation on this one, Your Honor.
Major difference between the two.
The house is in considerable need of repair, and I think this gentleman is taking on that, as a matter of fact, in a encompassing manner.
And these applications are coming to us prior to the work being done or upon completion?
Many times it will be prior.
Generally, we'll take them on completion.
A lot of times, you're going to see an application prior, because it's an estimate of value before they get started, so that they know going into their project whether or not they're actually going to be receiving the benefit.
Okay.
Go ahead. Oh, go ahead.
I'm just going to say, this one definitely seems qualified as, you know, adding significant value to the home, and I would approve.
Okay. Move by Revelinsky to approve the request, second by Boyer.
I'll second that, because I'm familiar with the property too, and.
All right, very good.
It's very much worth it.
Moved and seconded to approve the request by Michael Casey. Is, let's see, call the roll.
Revelinsky?
Yes.
Boyer?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hammers?
Are you supposed to apply after it's completed?
Hamilton?
Yes. Yes, why?
Did we just vote first?
We'll call the vote.
Okay. Mr. Casey, do you have a comment? You can come up and ask.
Well, it's a question.
Okay.
I think you asked whether you're supposed to apply on completion or at some other time, and I didn't get an answer.
Well, you got your answer because you just got approved.
I would recommend to anyone doing a project, they come in prior to, and see if that, you know.
The last meeting I was here, that's what they said.
Yeah, no, I was asking the question, and Kevin did answer that. We have, when we've done these requests in the past, they have come in after the project is completed. We know the total value, it's been verified, but that's fine.
But just to clarify, though, we're proving your assessment, your estimate, but when it's done, the assessor, county assessor will actually prove what the actual value is. They might be a little different.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to the second reading of our beach ordinance. So this is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing at this time and ask if there's any comments from the public. I see members of our beach committee here. I was not here for the first reading. I assume that all went smoothly, we passed from the first to the second. Okay?
Got everything hammered out.
Yeah, good. I'll close the public hearing then, and ask what is the wish of the council?
Can I bring up one potential amendment that was brought to my attention? I don't really know if it's necessary, but under E, the city of Fairfield will have emergency rescue equipment adjacent to the beach for emergency use. I was asked if the wording should be adjacent to or on the beach. Does adjacent to actually negate actually on the sandy portion? I don't think. the sandy portion? I don't think it does, does it?
No, actually, that's an interesting question. Because on a philosophical level, we want to get into the etymology of this, I guess that's the right word.
No, actually, I looked up adjacent. I wanted to make sure.
I thought you were going to say I looked up etymology.
I was like, you know.
Not just near and around.
Yeah. Adjacent to can mean, if you're, say, beach, I think a lot of, when someone says beach, it depends on what do you do at the beach. If you're someone who goes to the beach and is a more passive user of the beach, swimming at the beach wouldn't be what you refer to as the beach. It would be the general area around the beach.
It has sand on it.
Well, near the area with sand. It could be at a restaurant. It could be on the...
Okay. I'm going to cut this little nuanced discussion off right here.
I was wondering how long he's going to let me down.
You don't need the...
I'm going to ask Councilman Howley if he'd like to make a motion to pass it from the second to third with an or inserted in there as well.
Or on?
Or on.
Or on, okay.
Yes, I would like to make that motion.
Okay, so motion to approve with the amended language and E to read either or on the beach. Right, adjacent to or on the beach.
Yep.
Second.
Is there a second? Seconded by Revulinski. Any discussion? Not please call or roll.
Howley?
Yes.
Revulinski?
Yes.
Ledger Kaelin?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Boyer?
Yes.
Hammers?
Yes.
Hamilton?
No, because of the reasons I stated at the last meeting, is the liability issue of having equipment there and the equipment going missing being one that the city should address as well within this ordinance.
Okay.
I felt bad I didn't do it, but with your last talk, because I...
All right, so the motion passes six to one. We'll have our third reading on March 25. Next, council, we have the second reading of our RagBri ordinance, getting ready for our throngs of folks coming up. And what's that? Yeah, I was going to suggest that as well. We'll open up the public hearing and ask if there's any public comment. Not, we'll close the public hearing. I know that the RagBri team is going to Des Moines later this week. And I think it would be good if they went with an approved resolution from the city. So I would recommend that we, the council waives the rules on this and move to the third reading.
So you need to suspend.
What's that?
I would make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion by Hamilton to suspend the rules on the reading of the ordinance, seconded by Revulinski.
Just to clarify, this is a one-day ordinance.
Right.
It only exists for the day of July 26.
2013.
2013. That's right.
Any other discussion?
RagBri.
Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Now we'll entertain a motion.
I would move the ordinance through the final reading.
Okay. Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Seconded by Boyer. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Okay, thank you. We're ready for RagBri.
Not quick.
Okay, I agree.
Okay. Guys, we'll move down to our committee reports. We have a water and sewer utilities committee report. Darren?
We met on March 6. And we had several people in attendance. We had four items that we discussed. I have attached minutes of the meeting to that. And I would ask first if anyone has any comments over those minutes that I could address, or if you would like me to just kind of give a general overview of what we did.
Well, I know we have some residents who were involved with it here tonight, who were involved with the discussion about the North Fourth Street sewer tap. So why don't you give an overview on that issue, Darren?
That was the first item that we took up in the meeting. There was an illegal connection discovered for properties that are adjacent to North Fourth Street in the New Chicago area, as people refer to it. There is no sanitary sewer that runs north-south in front of the property. And at some point in history, there was connection for common buildings through there made. And there is a map that I attached as well, that was provided by one of the property owners, that shows a pretty good idea of where that sewer line is actually at. Mr. White, at 403 North Fourth, had a problem with the sewer line not running properly, and had asked Darrell to look into it. I believe he used a plumbing service to try to route the line out, and it still didn't alleviate the blockage. Then it was dye-tested by Darrell and his crew, and they found that it's dumping into a storm sewer on Depot Street, which runs along the north side of the properties out there. This is a common sewer line for these three property owners. And the blockage seems to be in the area underneath Mr. Glossop's property. Mr. Bowen didn't have a problem with doing his portion of the disconnect and reconnect to the sanitary sewer, disconnecting from the storm sewer, which is the illegal connection. The problem lies in that Mr. Glossop was asking the committee to come up with some creative solution in which the sewer could be constructed in front of the properties along Fourth Street. That, in terms of actually doing, has not been investigated completely, but it seems to be a very costly solution for this type of problem. Mr. Glossop also asked if the city would designate his buildings as warehouses. He currently has one tenant that has a water and bathroom facility in the building. They would have to be, they would have to vacate, pretty much, because if you're going to cut off the sewer, you have to cut off the water service as well. And that's done at the main, and the disconnection is made there. The committee ultimately recommended that this is a civil matter between property owners out there as far as what would take place with the sewer. Easements need to be put in place to get the sewer, a sewer line at the back of the properties. If you look, Mr. Glossop's main properties extend farther back than what Mr. Bowen's and Mr. White's do. And an easement would have to cross that property. And of course, you cannot construct anything on top of an easement. So that's another stumbling point, at least with Mr. Glossop. But the committee recommends that we leave this as a civil matter and that the council not take it up.
Question about, I mean, usually we get the storm sewer running into the sanitary. Here we got the other way around. I mean, has that, are steps taken to remedy that now? Has it been fixed, or?
It hasn't been fixed yet. There's a letter that was attached clear at the very end of this from Sean Worley, our wastewater superintendent. And I don't see Sean in attendance with us this evening. But they were given 60 days to contact the city initially. And then we, the city has also granted an extension of 30 days to the 60-day time period that's described in City Ordinance, Chapter 13, for sanitary sewer connections. And we've increased it from 60 days to 90 days in order to have that connection corrected. So again, we've extended that time period as a courtesy. And that was agreed upon earlier before the committee meeting. That was done with the consent of Darrell and also with Sean. So again, the committee felt that this was more a civil matter and not an issue that the city needs to address itself.
So it's not, it's not a matter of if it's going to be taken out of the storm sewer and put into sanitary? That's for sure going to happen. It's just a matter of how it's going to be, how it's going to work out.
How it works out so that each individual property owner has a way to get their sewer out of their building.
Right. So what's being, so what was being suggested? Mr. Glossop was a solution from the city's side. And what we're saying is that...
Well, there was no real suggestions as far as what the city should do, other than maybe constructing a sewer main.
Right. Well, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
In front of the buildings.
But if, barring that, then the property owners are going to have to work out for themselves how they're going to tie in legally, individually.
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
And we gave them 90 days from the date of our meeting.
Right.
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 So Paul, this is, I know you've commented at your committee meeting. I'll give you just a few seconds, a few minutes here to comment. Few minutes, I'm sorry. Yeah, generally, this is not a, you know, a public hearing matter. But if you'd like to make a couple of comments to see if the council has any other thoughts.
Okay.
But if the committee has already heard this and made a recommendation, that's probably as far as they'll take it. But go ahead.
Good. My relationship to a creative solution didn't mean, didn't refer to the city putting in a sewer line in the front of the building. I would consider that a normal solution. Considering that everybody in the city, by the standards of a normal city, has a sewer line either in the front of their building, or in the back of their building, if there exists a back alley, then there's a direct connection without taking recourse to going across other people's property. You can come out of the front of your building, the city kindly offers you to go under the sidewalk, and then you hook up to the sewer. That's the case probably in 97% of all buildings in Fairfield.
I wouldn't concur with that. Not all city streets and not all alleys in the city of Fairfield have sewer lines in them. And we've already run into cases of where sewer lines, you would have assumed that a sewer line would have been near a property in an alley or in a street, but it wasn't. And that property had to have easements to get over to where the existing sewer main was. We've already had people come and address the council about that for relief in financing that they had to put in, an extension when new work was done for a new sewer replacement. And that was brought up at the meeting as well. So we've discussed that.
I also did not ask for the city to pay for the cost of new individual taps to buildings, only for the sewer line itself. Just to correct the...
Okay. Paul, can you describe what you are asking then, so that the rest of the council?
Yes. What I was asking for in the matter of creative solutions, I've already discussed with Kevin as possibilities earlier today, actually. And certain things became clear that means that my possible concerns are mitigated somewhat.
Okay.
So that probably, let me see. And also, there's something here about the committee didn't accept this as a viable option, because it would not get any relief to Mr. White. I didn't understand that.
You had suggested that you close off the sewer access to your buildings so that they could be designated a warehouse.
Yes, a storage facility.
And by doing that, you weren't addressing the obstruction that Mr. White was having that occurs somewhere underneath your property as the line lies right now. So that was, that was where I had mentioned that there was really no relief going to be given to Mr. White if that was the case.
No, our common interest would be served by having a sewer line across the front for six different properties. Our common interest.
Okay.
I won't go on because...
So, yeah, I don't think this is going to be, this is going to require any council action at this point. So if you're dialoguing with Kevin, and then with Sean Worley, we'll see what we can accomplish.
However, I would, you know, keep my case quiet.
Okay. Okay. Darren, any other, any action items that are required in the rest of the report?
Just one that I feel needs to be brought up this evening. The second item that we took up on the agenda was wells within the city. Currently, they're under the ordinance that we prohibit that from happening. But the individual that was asking for this was not at the meeting. But I think that there are going to be other individuals that are going to want to come forward to try to ask for this, rather than putting in a second meter so that they can water plants, or lawn, or fill pools, or whatever they would like to do with a well on their property. But I think that any further requests that come to the committee are going to be denied as per city ordinance. And I would think that the council would want to follow suit with that if they come to the full council after not receiving an answer that's acceptable to them from the committee.
Okay. So you're just, at this point, you're just advising us that it might be something that we are aware of?
We will see this again.
Okay?
I know we will be revisited by other individuals with this particular item.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else?
No, there's no other action needed by the council at this time.
Okay. Thank you. Then we'll move on to a report from Public Safety and Transportation.
And that's, can we wait till...
I'm sorry, that, you held your meeting, but we'll, you'll report that at our next meeting. Okay, very good. Then if there is any other business for the council, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Moved by Hamilton.
Second.
Seconded by Boyer. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Meeting adjourned.